Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock and as Mayor I hereby call to order a meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for this hour on July 10, 2017. As always we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Armin Boldik in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Mary Reynolds and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Barnes?
Present.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Baer?
Present.
Counselor Hamel?
Madam Clerk, let the record show that Counselor Hamel is absent this evening.
Counselor Ballack?
Here.
Presiding Mayor Edward Haines.
Present. Also at the front table tonight for the record is City Manager Scott Myers and the City Finance Director Donna Woodhamon. First item of business is the acceptance of minutes. You have two sets of minutes before you tonight for approval. The first one is for the special budget meeting we held on June 19th. Those minutes were distributed to the council on June 30th. No corrections or changes were received in the clerk's office to date. Second set of minutes has to do with the, actually three sets of minutes. There were two meetings on June 26th, a budget hearing prior to our regular meeting and then the regular meeting itself. Those minutes were also distributed on June 30th and again, no changes or corrections were received in the clerk's office. So, in lieu of any changes at this point in time, I'm going to declare that the minutes to those three meetings are accepted as submitted by the clerk. Next, we're on to consent and action calendar. There's just one item tonight. That's on page 22 of your packet. A request from William Leclair to perform music on the boardwalk at Weir's Beach. This is a similar request to previous approval for the same thing. He uses a small amplifier in a small tent. Any questions before we get to a motion on that? So, a motion being ordered to approve the request of William Leclair to perform music on the boardwalk during 2017 with the condition that he attain the necessary licensing permits. Motion is made by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Boldik. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. Citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate place in our meeting agenda for anyone in our audience tonight to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone who meets that criteria here tonight? Oh, okay, we have three public hearings tonight.
Interviews.
Did I miss something?
Oh, interviews. I don't see them, that's why I skipped over.
Mr. Tivnan is here.
All right, we have two vacancies on the planning board. Both are incumbents seeking reappointment. And I'm gonna skip down to number two because I don't see Mr. St. Clair here. Jay Tivnan is applying for reappointment. If you could come to the microphone please and introduce yourself and tell us why you would like another term.
Mayor Angler, I'm applying for another term for the City of Laconia Planning Board. I've been on it since May of 2009. And as I've gone along, I've enjoyed it, I've paid attention to it, and it gives me something to do every single month. And that's why I'm here.
Okay. Is that microphone on even? I can't hear it.
I believe so. Thank you very much.
Try again. Do we have any questions for Mr. Tivnan or comments? Counselor Boldik?
I just wanna thank you for coming forward to take that position again.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Boldik.
And I just wanna say, it's been a pleasure serving with you, Jay. Thank you.
And you have our condolences.
I have to admit that sitting next to that gentleman has been a lot of fun because he comes up with questions that I would've never thought of and he does a good job of it. And he's with you guys, so you're all set?
Good.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for coming tonight. And I should've said out loud at first for both applicants that according to council rules, we do interviews at one meeting and consider appointments at the following meeting. So, we'll not be voting on any elections tonight. I know both of you are incumbents and you're allowed to continue serving until someone is appointed, you're reappointed or someone is appointed in your stead. So, there's no issue there with you continuing to serve, but we'll take this up again on July 24th. And applicants are always invited to come back if they want, but it's not necessary.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The second applicant seeking another three-year term on the planning board is Charlie St. Clair.
Three years?
Three years.
I didn't know it was that long. Hi. Yes, I would like to be reappointed to the planning board. As the last gentleman just said, I think he said, it's moving along very well. I think we've got a good board right now and it's a pleasure to be on that board, actually. And I like to think that myself, when I'm there, I'm not gonna speak for everybody else on the board, but I get the same impression is that they try to look at things through the viewpoint of common sense. What's good for the city, what's good for the neighborhoods, what's good for the area where people are trying to do things. I guess that's...
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. St. Clair? Counselor Woodhamon?
I know you were half joking, but do you have any concerns about completing the term?
Oh, God, no. It just seems like...
Is this an age issue you're raising there?
Probably, probably. Well, just, you know, just three years seems like a long time, Counselor, but as most of us know, it's really not that long.
It's by fast.
No, not unless I win the lottery or something, but I would probably still hang out, so, yeah, I'd still be here.
Thank you for coming forward.
Anyone else?
Just, it's been a pleasure to be on the board with you, Charlie. Thank you.
Likewise, Counselor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, we'll make these, consider these appointments at our next meeting on July 24th. Okay, now we get to public hearings. We have three public hearings scheduled tonight. The first public hearing is regarding Resolution 1717 relative to authorizing the city manager to establish a non-capital reserve account for Laconia School District to be titled Laconia School District Education Stabilization Reserve Account. Notice that this public hearing was made on the Wednesday, June 28, 2017 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of Laconia School District. Action on this item is scheduled to be taken tonight under unfinished business. So, having said that, I will declare the public hearing to be open at eight minutes past seven. And I ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who would like to comment on the matter of creating a non-capital reserve account for the Laconia School District. No, okay, I'm going to note for the record that no one spoke tonight and we will, I'll close the public hearing at nine minutes past seven. And we'll move on to the next resolution, which is 1718. This resolution is relative to amending the tax exemptions for the elderly policy. Notice that this public hearing was made on the Wednesday, June 28, 2017 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of Laconia School District. Again, action on this item is scheduled to be taken up tonight under unfinished business. This has to do with the elderly exemption, which I believe are being, let me say for our audience's sake here, if I can find it...
Made more favorable?
Hmm?
Being made more favorable for the...
Yeah, are being tweaked slightly upwards. Let me get the exact language here. So that the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $25,000. So, that number was 23, I believe, or is 23 presently, or if married, a combined net income of less than $35,000 and own assets not in excess of $75,000 excluding the value of the person's residence. So, 25, 35, and 75 are the new numbers. Is there anyone? So, I'll declare this public hearing to be open at 10 minutes past seven and ask if there's anyone with us tonight who wishes to comment relative to Resolution 18 and tax exemptions for the elderly. Okay, I'll note for the record there was no comment and I'll declare that public hearing closed at 11 minutes after seven. Lastly, tonight, we have Resolution 1719. This is relative to the adoption of the new state law allowing all veterans property tax, all veterans property tax credit and establishing the amounts for that credit. Notice that this public hearing was made on the Wednesday, June 26, 28, I'm sorry, 2017 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and at the offices of the Laconia School District. And again, action on this item is scheduled to be taken up this evening under unfinished business. And for the record, before I open the public hearing, I will note the details of this. Most of you already know this, but for our audience's sake, for those who don't, the, for a number of years, state law has allowed cities and towns in New Hampshire to grant a property tax exemption of, a tax credit I should say, I'm sorry, a property tax credit of $500 per year for veterans who served during what was considered an active wartime. But that credit did not apply to veterans of the armed forces who did not serve during an official time of war. And what this new law does is allow cities and towns on an optional basis, and by adopting this, tonight, we will be accepting that as one of those towns, to offer that same tax credit to all veterans regardless of when they served, with the caveat that the cities and towns may phase in this credit in order to lessen the immediate revenue impact to the city or town. And our formula that we have arrived at is an immediate tax credit for those non-wartime veterans of $150 if they apply for it. And that number would go up to $300 on April 1, 2019, and up to 500 back up to the normal amount of $500 on April 1 of 2020. And I should note for the record, and please correct me if I misunderstand this, but those who already qualify will stay at the $500 level. The 150, 305, so we don't want any confusion on that. So, if you're already taking the tax credit to $500, that doesn't, this does not affect that at all. This only affects the new applicants who did not serve during an official time of war. They'll start at 150 and then move up to 500 by the year 2020. So, with, having said that, I'll open the public hearing at 13 minutes past seven and ask if there's anyone in our audience tonight who wishes to offer opinion to the city council about the resolution regarding the veterans' property tax credit. For the record, no one has spoken on this issue either and I'll close the public hearing at 14 minutes after seven. And again, note that all three of those resolutions will be taken up tonight under unfinished business. We have no presentations tonight, so we're on to the mayor's report. I have two items that I would like to bring up tonight. One is the one that I first brought up at our last meeting, and that is with regard to the appointment of the Laconia member to the new commission that's being created by state law to study the economic development potential of the former state school property off of North Main Street. I did have a conversation last week with the Chief of Staff of the Senate President to find out where exactly they were in that process, and she told me that that law will become effective as soon as the governor signs it, although with the rash of bills that pass at the end of the legislative session, there's no great rush to do that. But whenever that happens within the month, the law will become effective immediately. And the law does say that the various appointments need to be made within 20 days of that date. She also asked me, Senator Morris also asked for some suggestions as to people who live in Laconia and and around the Lakes region that might be considered for appointment by either the governor or the Senate President or the House Speaker or the Executive Council who also have appointment authority. And so, as far as the status of our appointment is concerned, I'd like to make this appointment at our next meeting on the 24th to make sure we fit into the 20-day timeline. To date, I have gotten one suggestion from a member of the city council and two people, community members, have volunteered. So, at present, there are three names in the hat, so to speak, of people to consider for that appointment. So, this is sort of a last chance, counselors, if you have anyone in mind that you think would serve. Again, repeating what I said at our last meeting, the law specifically states that every member except the one from Laconia needs to have either real estate development or significant business experience. There is no such requirement for the Laconia member of that committee, but I think we should all keep in mind who the other members of the committee are going to be and whether our appointment would be a complement to that makeup. Second item I'd like to discuss tonight is the, sort of a state of the airport report, if I could. As you all know, the mayor of Laconia by statute is required to be the chairman of the Laconia Airport Authority, and that's not usually a job that mayors exactly look forward to. Some get elected without even knowing they have to do it, and I was very nearly one of those. But I must say that it has been a real pleasure to work with that group and work on airport matters, and I actually look forward to the meetings. And a great bunch of people, and I've learned an awful lot about general aviation and related matters in the three-plus years, three-and-a-half years that I've been doing that. I also think we've made significant progress, and I can report to you, some of you may have read the story that was in the newspaper last week about the airport, and I can report to you that probably the airport has never been on firmer financial ground. And that's good news for all of us. Not only is it a credit to our community in terms of the stature of the facility and quality of the facilities itself, but in the terms that it's being run, and the way it's being run, and with the efficiency that it's being run. I have some numbers to share with you tonight that I think you may find interesting. The total revenue, we finish our fiscal year at the airport on the same, at the same date the city finishes it, and the report, the numbers I'm giving you tonight are not official because we haven't closed the official books for the year yet, but they'll be pretty close to what we end up the year with. So, the total income for the airport this year was about $340,000. And I realize that pales in comparison to the city budget and the school budget, but the fact that we can run that facility on $340,000 a year is pretty great. Where does that money come from? Well, $250,000 of that, so about two-thirds of that money, comes from lease payments that have to be approved by council when they're made. These are long-term leases in general that are made to different companies. Most of them are made to companies who have hangars at the airport and to the two airport service operations that are active at the airport. So, that accounts for about, the lease income each year accounts for about two-thirds of the income. Most of the remaining income comes from two sources. One is our fuel flowage fee. So, in effect, we levy a 12 cents a gallon tax on all the fuel pumped by the fixed base operators at the airport. And this, this year, that brought in just under $60,000. And so, if you divide all that out, you can, you will figure out that we, those two operators sold almost a half a million dollars, a half a million gallons of fuel at the airport this year. So, that's, that's a lot of gas that gets pumped there and a testament to how many aircraft are using that, using the field there. So, that's on the income side. Another number that I think is particularly impressive is that this year, on that $340,000 of gross income, we turned a net operating profit of $87,000. That's 26%. There's a lot of companies in the world that would be, in fact, most companies in the world would be extremely jealous to have a 26% operating margin. So, that's how, that's how solvent the operation is from an operating standpoint. And, and so what we're doing is, so where does that money go? Well, it goes two places. One, in recent years, about half that amount is being spent on improvements at the airport, primarily in and around the terminal itself. We've done a complete redo of the inside of the terminal over the past few years. Both fixed base operators have completely remodeled their facilities of the same. We've put in a new conference room out there. We've made other improvements. We're looking at external improvements. We're gonna need a new roof on the terminal within the next couple of years. We're looking at landscaping improvements and other things. So, we look to spend something in the neighborhood of $40,000, $50,000 a year making capital improvements, capital outlay improvements at the airport. And these projects that we tackle with this money are not eligible for federal funding. So, these are, these are projects that we can't get federal money for, if you will, to complete. So, we've gotta pay dollar one and last dollar as well on these projects. And then the other half of that money this year, if there's money above and beyond that, and this year there's, there's 100% above that, in effect, that money flows into our cash reserve fund. And right now, we have right at $500,000, not counting that $40,000, in our, in our reserve account. And we have another, and the federal government, so that's $500,000 as a base. The federal government owes us $147,000, I think, in engineering fees that we will get a rebate on when our latest project gets full funding from the federal government. We'll get that. In other words, we've had to invest in engineering with our own money, but we'll get most of that money back once the project, once project funding comes through from the FAA. And so, that's another $150,000 that will be added to that reserve. Plus, we've sold another parcel of land to the Sportsman's Club that you all are well aware of, and that closing on that is gonna happen pretty imminently now. So, that'll be another $150,000 in round numbers added to the capital, to the reserve fund. And then we've also had a timber harvest on 45 acres of land that we own next to the Sportsman's Club, and that's gonna bring in about $60,000. So, there's several hundred thousand dollars more that's gonna be added to that $500,000 account. So, what do we do with that money? Well, that, the purpose of that money, other than meeting emergencies, is to provide the federal match for the big capital improvement programs. We have to, we have to come up with a 5% match. And, and so that's what we use that money for out of those reserves. And the one that was, the big one that's in the works right now, we're making capital improvement program, the capital improvements with federal money all the time, every year, literally. Most of them are safety-related, new signs, equipment, lighting for pilots, aids for pilots and that sort of thing. But the big one now that we're working on, that we, that our application is in before the FAA at this point in time, which provides 90% of the funds, is a, just under a $3 million project to refurbish, if you will, the old north-south runway, which we refer to now as taxiway E or Echo. And that runway hasn't been in use in decades. It's just, it's basically used as a taxiway now, although it's much wider than a normal taxiway because it was originally a runway. And it's not in good shape. And so, basically, we're replacing that taxiway, which will extend all the way to the northern end of the airport and the Emerson Aviation Facility at the north end of that taxiway. What it will also do is two things. One, it's gonna provide more itinerant parking for jets, which we lack space for at times of the year. So, there's gonna be another apron added to provide additional parking for that. And the second thing it's going to do is open up a number of existing lots that don't have great runway access right now, to runway, to great runway access. So, our hope is that that will make those lots more, more marketable to people who want to either put a airport service company there or rent and build a hangar for their own aircraft, that sort of thing. So, I'm happy to report that the airport probably has never been in better financial shape and is not only a real asset to our community and the region as well, but also importantly, is not in any way at present a drain on public resources. Okay?
Mayor, thank you for cheering that.
All right, committee reports. I believe the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee had a meeting tonight and would recognize Counselor Doyle for a report.
We did. We were reviewing the council rules of procedure. We're not quite ready to present those yet. We've got a few additions and a few changes to what we initially started with. We feel that one more meeting, once those are brought to us, that we'll be able to basically wrap it up and present it to council on, if we can have a meeting on August 14th at 6:30. That would be our next.
Okay, so we're gonna schedule another committee meeting on 8:14 at 6:30.
Yes. We basically went over these just to update, well, it's always good to review our rules, but to update the procedures, to add the ability to use digital media, to do housekeeping. Some of the attorney has suggested a few changes, just basic, basic updating.
Okay. So, I'm thinking out loud here, but I'm guessing as a matter of procedure that since you will be meeting at 6:30 that night, that it, that obviously we will welcome a report at that meeting as to what the recommendations are, but I'm guessing that it might be a good idea for us to, to not act on that on the, on the 14th so that the counselors have a chance to study what the...
I think so. I think so. Because it's not that there's a whole, there's not a lot of changes, but some of them you might wanna think about.
Yeah, this isn't something we do every day, so it's, it probably merits...
And with any luck it'll...
...a good look at it over a two-week period.
And with any luck, it'll, it'll last us for a few years.
Okay. All right, thank you for that report. Any other committee business?
Just in terms of the finance committee, we will have handled D and E by the end of this evening. In terms of agenda items under finance, we could delete those from the agenda. Need a motion to...
We can do that now. So, what is the motion?
To remove items D and E from the finance committee's agenda.
B?
D is in David, E is in elephant.
The veterans' tax and the...
Oh, yeah. All right, so Counselor Lippman makes a motion to remove from the agenda of the finance committee items D and E having to do first with expansion of veterans' tax credits and the tax credits exemptions that may be available. That one's for the elderly, right? E, yes. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Baer, seconds of motion. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, yes, and those two items are removed from the finance committee agenda. Counselor Doyle?
We actually need to make a motion to have that next meeting for the government operations. Yeah, if I could make a motion to do that.
Counselor Doyle makes the motion to set a meeting of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee for 6:30 PM on Monday, August 14th. Is there a second to that motion, please? Counselor Barnes, seconds of motion. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, yes, that motion carries as well. Any other committee business?
Is that the correct date?
The 14th, yes.
How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports? Okay. Citizens request to comment on current agenda items. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to comment on an item that is on tonight's agenda? This would be the appropriate time, yes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Peter Karajanis. My home address is 25 McGinnis Court in Guilford, but I own, I'm the owner of Happy Jacks and also the building at 6571 Church Street. Street, which is on an agenda item for adjusting the parking time span in front of those two buildings, Laconia Spa and Happy Jacks. We're very thankful to have the Karma Cafe across the street from us. It's wonderful to have a nice restaurant right there. It's bringing a lot of nice people into the area. I think it's great. But it's created a little bit of a problem for us where there's three spots in front of the Laconia Spa and Happy Jacks. They're more transient spots where we'd like to keep them open for 15-minute parking. And what's happened is people come over and they stay for an hour at the restaurant and they park in front of 6571 Church Street. And I counted the spots. There's 12 spots on the bridge, and then there's one directly across from Laconia Spa. Makes it 13, plus they have nine of their own within their, on their lot. I think there's ample parking for longer-term parking, but we'd like to make an adjustment with the city to have painted spaces, maybe, not put posts. That caused another problem in the wintertime for cleaning the snow removal. So if we, I don't know if we can have painted spaces that say 15-minute parking, and if we need to, I wouldn't mind putting a sign physically on my building, but no posts if possible. That's what the request is all about. Again, I'm thankful that they're there, and I want to be a good neighbor, but we want to keep those movable spots, you know, keep people in and out for commerce.
Are those two-hour spots now?
They're one-hour spots now.
One hour. Okay. Is there a sign there that says that?
No, there isn't. It hasn't been since the bridge was redone. That was the last time those spots were adjusted.
The public has no idea what the limit is, or even if there is one.
Right. I didn't want to, you know, just put a sign up. I wanted to make it, see if we could make it somewhat official, and if we could paint on the spots, 15-minute parking, have the city do that. That would be wonderful.
Counselor Baer has a question.
What are the hours here?
The hours of the Karma Cafe are from 7:00 to 2:00, 7:00 AM to 2:00, lunch after lunch. But our hours are 6:00 AM with the Laconia Spa to 11:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Okay. We are to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your agenda packet for the first meeting of the month, we have two reports. The first one is the Financial and Operational Trends, where the meat of the report begins on page 34. A couple of things in play here, as the Finance Department likes to tell everybody on June 30th, Happy New Year. For the fiscal new year, we wrap up one year, so a few of these numbers might adjust slightly as we continue working towards closing the books. But top of page 34 deals with the actual assessing year, which is set in state law by the Department of Revenue Administration, and the assessing year runs from April 1st to March 31st. So we are now into it several months at this point, April, May, and June, a third of the way through. We have 9.5 million in new construction value year-to-date, less any demolition compared to a year ago. We had 5.6 million, and two years ago, 4.5 million. So we're certainly trending a bit higher, a quarter of the way through the year, which is positive. We'll turn your direct attention toward the bottom of page 35, the property tax collection. Tax bills were due on July 5th. We had very busy days in the building on both July 3rd and July 5th, but this is, again, is reflective of June 30th. So we're about 72 percent collection with the July warrant that went out. But again, those numbers will adjust once the July figures come in, in your August agenda for August 14th. Motor vehicle registrations, we think this is a relatively firm number, but finished the year very strong on a budgeted estimate of 2.5 million. We came in a little over 2.7 million, so about 8 percent, almost 9 percent over estimates. If you look at the bottom of page 36, the impact fee revenue, so those are revenues year-to-date in the second column over there, along with the total revenue of what was carried forward from prior years. We are going to be recommending a small transfer out of the roads account related to the budget adoption tonight, where we've made some small cuts to the street budget. And I've already brought to your attention the library that we cut $5,000 out of technology in the budget that we're looking to bring forward out of the impact fees. On the top of page 37, any adjustments that the council recently made to the winter maintenance count, the accrued leave account are reflected there. So those are current balances, and especially the non-capital reserve, that's less any projects that we have funds encumbered for. And the tax increment financing to the right of that, with a budget adoption, new funds will flow into those three accounts, but the Weers just made a payment towards its debt service. So that's why you can see where that was. I think it was a positive $43,000 or so last month, the debt payment was made on that. So that's why it shows that being in the red, and we're carrying a little due to, due from on the city. The final number on that page, the boat taxes...
So this will be, report-wise, a running total?
Yes.
Always on?
Yes.
Those payments, the mortgage payment on that or the interest payments, it's quarterly?
The boat taxes, those reflect what's, not only what collected here, but there's a little lag between our boat agents and the city. So some monies they collected through year-end didn't tally and hit our books by June 30th. So there'll be an adjustment on that to tie up the year 2017. Happy to stop there and take any questions on Financial and Operational Trends?
Counselor Levin?
On the impact fees with respect to the school portion, is there any, if I remember what we ended up doing there?
We have made them aware that at the time, I think it was $45,000 was the balance when we brought in the schools attention, let them know it was there. There haven't been any requests to utilize it at this point, but they're aware that those funds are there. Going to the Monthly Economic Development Report, you can see on the top of page 39, again, we continue to have very strong, in terms of very low unemployment, Laconia, Belknap County, Concord, Manchester, and the state. Actually, very comparable to not only where it was in April, but where we were last May. So again, very, very strong labor market at this point. And the March, I'm sorry, the May number for CPIU, Consumer Price Index, which is our inflation calculator, came in at 1.9 percent. So five months through the year, we're running a 2.3 percent annualized rate for inflation. I'm going to pass around some what are almost finalized numbers for Motorcycle Week. I'll let those sheets get around to you and then speak to them.
Does he have that fan turned off?
Turned off? Sure. Is there an extra copy that you have there?
Oh, sorry.
So the revenue, we feel, is a firmed-up number at this point. A couple of small revenue pieces came into us as recently as today. So the revenue generated was a little over $134,000. If you look on the expense side, we feel that we're firm on all of the labor. There was an out-of-town, a large bill that wasn't available to us at the last meeting. Couple of lightly shaded areas and a couple of small line items. We're still looking to extrapolate any of those costs and get a couple of those bills in, but you can see the highlighted areas are a little bit over $2,000 in outstanding expenses. We think all the other line item expenses there are firmed up at this point. So we're basically about a $1,200, showing on paper right now about a $1,200 loss on dedicated revenues that came in for Motorcycle Week versus dedicated expenses. So the expenses were $135,605, and the revenue $134,403. Again, on the expense side, subject to some minor accounting adjustments due to those shaded areas. So I guess the, in layman's terms, a break-even scenario on Motorcycle Week with some, a significant lesser amount in vendor permits and licensing fees this year. So happy to take any questions there before I go on to a final item.
Any questions about the Motorcycle Week report?
I'd just like to know, and I don't know if you have the answer for tonight or not, or just generally whether our revenues have been increasing or increasing over, say, the last four or five years. So we can try to get a picture of what we may be looking at.
It should show in the, yes, it should.
So in your budget book would be the easiest way to represent this to you? If you turn to, it's right toward the end, page 161.
I forgot my budget.
Okay. You can see the actuals going back to 2013, so fiscal year 1213, but that would have picked up 2013 Motorcycle Week. So 13, 14, 15, 16 are actual, and the 2017 numbers you just received. So the range from the first four were a low of $140,506 to a high of $164,000. So in the 140 to low 160 range. So a little bit of a, a little bit of a reduction in this year compared to the four years.
Over five years, we're down $30,000.
Yep.
From that rate, the rates we charge have been unchanged for decades.
Correct.
I don't think they've ever changed.
We did adjust the rent up on the city-owned boardwalk spaces, I think, two or three years ago, up to its current level. They had been lowered in the late 2008, '09 period, I think, when the economy...
I think they were 2,000, 2,500 originally, weren't they? Counselor Hamel would remember that.
That was before my time. I think we were at a...
It was 2,000 or 2,500, and then it was cut. Yeah.
And with the shifting of the spaces, with the Motorcycle Week Association taking a few of the spaces on the boardwalk, we reconfigured, so we're down a couple on rental spaces where we might have been four or five years ago as well.
Speaking of that, are we resolved to take up the issue about those three vendor spots at some point in time, or is that, we're waiting for initiative from the Ames family, or what is...
I know the Ames family, through their attorney, reached out to those of you who went down and visited with them at the Weers during Motorcycle Week. I haven't had a specific request to place it back on the agenda, but with council requests, we can place that on at any point if you'd like to.
I just think there was, from the people I talked to, there was a desire to not put it off indefinitely, to deal with it as soon as reasonable.
I think as well as maybe taking a little broader look at the whole situation to both deal, I think, with the financial implications and maybe some other opportunities that might be in and around.
That makes sense.
So we can do that for two weeks from tonight. If the council like it, we can put it off to August. We can do it on the July 2nd.
I mean, I don't know what the availability of the Ames family or their attorney is for that day, but we can certainly ask.
We can make the inquiry, and if that date would work for them, fine. If not, we can shoot to, push it back a little bit.
I'm not trying to slow it down or hurry it up, but I know it's important that we address the Ames family, but I'd like to get some other input. I don't know whether if we do that by notice or what, but I'd like to...
Oh, yeah. I wasn't pushing for a decision so much as just not putting the subject off until...
Or at least give people the opportunity to...
Looking for a public hearing, Counselor?
I think I am.
I could have guessed that. So...
So we can make the meeting in the form of a public hearing, no?
Yeah.
I don't know if it, I don't know if it requires notice of a public hearing or just a mechanism to reach out to those people that might be interested. We did this when we did some of the zoning issues at the Weers. So I'm not particularly concerned about the mechanism. I'm just concerned that we get input from a number of sources. That's what I'm concerned with.
And the input we would be seeking is, can we frame it a little bit so we've got a direction as to what we're telling people that the comment is about?
Okay. We're examining the uses during Motorcycle Week of city space on the boardwalk and in other places, and taking a look at, Henry, why don't you finish that off before what you wanted to do?
I think that the city spaces probably cover it, because that's what we have control over in terms of, but I think in terms of just, you know, they were trying to bring us down there to take a look at the congestion in that corner of city spaces. But I think, having been down there and looked at that and seen the issues that are there, I think there are also some, maybe some other opportunities to address that issue as well as the revenue picture here that's declining.
You know, I think it might be a good time to discuss the revenue picture there, you know?
Right. I mean, I think the issue is, you know, if we take away a space, we're now in the red, and it's a dedicated fund. But, so I think, you know, it may take some creativity to both address the concerns that have been raised as well as meet our financial requirements.
Yeah. We can, all that's on the table. I mean, the, you know, as far as breaking it down, as far as, A, should we be allowing food vendors in those spaces on the asphalt off the boardwalk for congestion reasons? And B, if we don't want food vendors there, are other types of vendors acceptable? You know, so that would bring in nearly an equal amount of revenue if we did that, or if we just decide that congestion's too great in that area and there shouldn't be any vendors there at all. But then we have other opportunities in the street and on the boardwalk as well to make that revenue up.
So then I probably would ask that we not do it for July 24th, just because if we're going to try to do some outreach and give enough parties advance notice, that's going to take a little bit more legwork than just putting it as an agenda item. So if it's okay with the council, if we try to reach out to folks and schedule that for the August 14th meeting?
Okay.
Sure. Depends on what the agenda looks like that night, yeah. I mean, what else we've got scheduled?
I know we're planning on having the presentation from the Executive Director of the Retirement System that night.
Right.
So let's do it on the 28th.
Counselor Baer can start preparing her questions now.
So on the 28th, direction?
28th of August or July?
Of August.
August. Okay.
28th for motorcycles, huh?
And if it does turn out that we want to post that as a public hearing for some reason, we'd have plenty of time to do that.
Plenty of time.
Although I tend to agree with Counselor Bowden, it's kind of like the Weir situation, is if the word gets out that that's what we're going to be talking about that night, just regular agenda item of speaking to agenda items or non-agenda items, we'll track people if they're interested.
Yep. Which means we get our council rules of procedure up and running.
That's right.
And the final item, we're just starting to scratch the surface with the numbers to understand it, but the parking kiosks went live the week after Motorcycle Week. So we're trending, we're tracking information by location. So as you know, the two kiosks in the parking lot for the beach parking are set at a higher rate for the beach parking, more of that stadium seating, if you will. And then the other kiosk along Lakeside, Lakeside are available for people to punch in their space number, and those are at the dollar an hour rate. We are seeing somewhere between 80 and 90 percent of the transactions are occurring electronically. So a lot of people are taking advantage of the credit cards or the debit cards. And what we're trying to break down now is, you know, by kiosk, how many transactions at certain kiosks, or some kiosks, you know, getting a whole lot more attention. Is the spacing proper between them? We'll be able to track, you know, dollars per transaction or hours per transaction and those types of things, days of the week and stuff. But as it stands right now, the revenue is coming in relatively strong, probably ahead of conservative projections. The weather, for the most part, has been very favorable. So, you know, we haven't had any, you know, complete wipeout stretches of days over a weekend or anything, but a few minor glitches and a card reader on one and different things, and trying to work with the public on educating and folks who maybe hadn't had experience, you know, using a kiosk before and trying to do it. But all in all, I think a very successful rollout, not only from the operational end, but from the financial end to it.
Are we getting input on tickets written?
Yeah.
That'll start trending. So I mean, we've tried to go, tried to go in soft early on and used education, a couple of...
Terms of enforcement, you mean?
Yes. And the challenge sometimes, if we've had a situation where one kiosk wasn't accepting credit cards, per se, and that's all somebody had, or we had a brief interruption one day where the wireless network went down, we've got to be careful in not trying to be heavy-handed, because if somebody pulled in at that moment and the wireless network was down and they couldn't get their credit card to swipe, potentially, they were looking to pay for five hours. So it wouldn't be fair to... So it wouldn't be fair to ticket for a five-hour window, if you will, because somebody could have tried to pay and not been able to pay. So we've tried to be very consumer-friendly, customer-friendly, tourist-friendly. Um, there's just a couple of bugs working out, like there isn't many new systems as we're getting into it. So, uh, we're not, we're not trying to be in the business of aggressively writing tickets down there, but we will be enforcing.
Explain the stadium seating remark. I didn't get that.
Stadium seating is kind of like when you sit in the front row at a ballpark, you pay prime prices. So if you want to park front row at the beach, you pay the premium dollar, the $2 an hour to park at the beach versus up on Lakeside, we're charging a dollar an hour.
Oh, okay, you just meant relative to...
That's how they describe it in the parking world. The closer you are to the center of the hub, the more expensive, and more to the outskirts. When you're sitting in the bleachers, you're up in the cheap seats, so to speak.
We're not... It's, it's not like the front row of the parking lot.
Although it's an idea.
We have concierge and butler service down there, too, to watch your stuff carried to the beach. Uh, and we did roll out our new website today, kind of a, it's more than a soft rollout, it's out there. Uh, there's a little transition period for some people who, if they tie, if they enter in the old website address, um, I've been told it's up to 48 hours for some computers to be automatically redirected to the new address, but you can certainly type in the new address, which is laconianh.gov and get right to the new website. Um, even though it's been uploaded, we realized that we've got a few, um, tweaks and updates to do because with the transition, with the company we were working with by the name of Civics Plus, gave us a date that they froze, so any content that was on any of our webpages at a date back in the end of May, that's what they were taking and working toward transitioning over to the news site, because they had to pick a, a date certain when they were going to capture the material that was there.
Yeah.
So all of our departments have been keeping a running list of anything new that we've been adding to the website from May 26th to today's date, because now we'll have to go in and shift that over and update it to make that live as well. So a few things will still be in the works. One of the, the great options to it is going to, really going to be an opt-in, where you can customize on the page and create an account, and you can choose to, it's almost like a shopping list. You can say, "I want to be receiving city council agendas when they're posted," or "I want to get information about when the, the next hazardous waste cleanup day is," or "I want to opt-in to any updates that Parks puts on regarding programs that they're offering," or "What's happening when the library updates their calendar? I want to get a little notification." So folks can really go in and choose what interests them. And at some point, if they feel they're getting too many notifications, they've got their own account, they can just go in and back off something if they think they're receiving too many types of emails or notifications. So it's going to be very interactive. Um, it's a lot more intuitive and just user-friendly. The various pages are consistent, so when you're looking for minutes for the planning department versus the city council versus zoning, they're all located in the same types of pages and the format, so, um, we encourage people to go in and poke around, but just realize that we are still making some modifications on the update for the reason that I just mentioned, um, over the next couple of weeks. But I think it's going to be a, a much better format. And our old website was no longer going to be supported. It was very old, and the technology was antiquated, and it just wasn't supported anymore with today's technology. So, um, for a number of reasons, we think this is a very positive step.
So does the, does the new web address come up to the top of a Google search already, or is the old one still?
It does not yet.
I don't know that yet.
Sure.
So the web address, you can still go onto the old one, and there's a bar right at the top that says, "Click here for new website," and the new website's address is laconianh.gov.
It, it just opened up for me when I clicked on City of Laconia, the old thing. I didn't know you put in the new site. I should have, I guess, but I clicked on it, and it just opened up, and I'm saying, "Wow."
Did you click on it out?
Nice picture, too.
Did you click on it out of Google?
Huh?
Did you click on it out of Google?
I, I have it bookmarked in Mozilla.
Bookmark.
I have it bookmarked in Mozilla, so that's how I get to it.
It's locked at different times.
Yeah.
All right, questions or comments for the manager? Okay, thank you. We're on to new business. Attention to page 41. And this is a subject that Mr. Karagianis addressed earlier, uh, a recommendation to change the parking restrictions at 65 to 71 Church Street, those three spots, parallel parking spots in front of the Laconia Spa and Happy Jacks. Before we get into making motions, uh, anybody like to discuss this, or...
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Lippin?
I think it seemed like a reasonable request based on the circumstances. I guess how we get it done, I think I'd defer to whether we're going to paint the, the street, or I understand he doesn't want posts in front of his business, but maybe we could, rather than trying to design it here at the tables, to give it to the city administration to figure out what the best way is to accomplish this.
Anyone else?
I just, I just want to say, I agree that, you know, we ought to try to protect those spaces for that store, because they've been there a lot longer than the new ones, and, um, they need the business, so...
Could we ask Wes how he feels about the painted signs versus the, um, signs?
Public Works Director Wes Anderson.
I think we're going to have to put it up on the side of his buildings and one of the posts, just because of the visibility effect. If you put it on the street, they may park on top of it and never see it.
Exactly, yeah.
And in the winter months as well.
Right.
But we can certainly...
Yeah.
Use some common sense and work with the property owner and get something that works.
Okay, a motion to be in order to change the parking limit, time limits for three parking spaces located in front of the buildings numbered 65 through 71 Church Street on the odd-numbered side of the street from one hour to 15 minutes. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Bullock, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Baer seconds that motion. Any further discussion? All who's in favor of making that change, please raise a hand. Five votes yes, motion carries. Change is made. Okay, item number two is on page 42, and that is a request to reduce the speed limit on Hilliard Road from Endicott Street to the dead end from 35 to 25 miles per hour. A discussion of that issue before we get to making motions.
I know that the, a lot of the residents on that street have not liked it for quite a while. They've wanted the speed reduced for a number of years.
Uh, as someone who is a, a frequent contributor to the brush dump, which is down toward the end of Hilliard Road, I can tell you that I was shocked to learn that the speed limit is 35 miles an hour.
I don't know how you do it, yeah.
I can't imagine anybody traveling 35 miles an hour on that road. Uh, it would be pretty terrifying, 35 in places, because it's very narrow and very twisty and hillier. Okay, anything else? All right, a motion to be in order to lower the speed limit on Hilliard Road from 35 to 25 miles per hour from its intersection at Endicott Road to the dead end at its west end.
Do we need to clarify that, that it's actually Endicott Street North? It's not Endicott Road?
All right, let's, let me change that to intersection at Endicott Street North to the dead end at its west end. Did you make that motion, Counselor Doyle?
Yes, please.
Seconded by Counselor Bullock. Any discussion? All who's in favor of changing that speed limit, please raise a hand. Five votes yes, motion carries, and that change is also approved. Item number three is on page 43, uh, referring to a memorandum from Ms. Woodman, and this is to repur, a repurpose request for kiosks. I guess we're not repurposing the kiosks, we're repurposing money to pay for the kiosks. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so which of you are going, is going to address this? Mrs. Woodman? Is going to use the microphone.
I, I would, but, oh, it's as far as it goes.
She's got a short cord there.
I won't say it. I got the luck, even though I didn't say it.
Um, there's, the, the request here is to transfer some remaining funds that are available in the Main Street Bridge account, as well as some excess funds that we have from the LED lighting bond after we receive the rebate that we're expected. So in terms of funding, if you recall last, uh, in this budget, in the fiscal year 17 budget, we had allocated 20, repurposed 25,000 from, I'm not sure where, but, and, so this is just, hopefully, will fill the gap to continue to pay for all the kiosks that we've committed to.
And I think back in the fall, and I identified, we were looking at either streetlights or a bridge or something of a similar type of, uh, street public works type of use to fund that. So these are the sources that we've identified.
Counselor Baer?
I've never been really fully vetted, I don't think, on this kiosk. When it came about, we actually didn't, you know, vote, uh, what the total cost was and how we said we were funding it.
So the total cost for 13 kiosks or 15 kiosks?
Was it 133?
104.
About 105,000.
105.
Yeah, in round numbers. Um, so we did broach it back in the fall, because we did identify that we did transfer 25,000 when we adopted the budget a year ago at this time. And then at that point, I identified to you, there'd be a couple of pockets, either in the LED streetlight savings, or possibly Frank Bean Road, um, or I don't think I specifically mentioned the Main Street Bridge, but I'd given out Frank Bean Road and the streetlights as a possible saving. So it was mentioned that as we got further into the fiscal year, we'd be looking to identify the funds. So 13 of them are being paid out of the general fund, and the two that are in the beach are being paid for by the dedicated account, um, where the parking receipts for Weers Beach Parking, anything above 25,000 flows into an account to support improvements at the beach. So the first 25,000 of parking at Weers Beach itself goes into the general fund, and the remaining amount is there to support the beach or the bathhouses or beach improvements and that type of stuff. So those two will be paid for out of dedicated Weers funds. And then the 65,000 that we're asking to repurpose today goes with the 25,000 that already exists to be the 90,000 that pays for...
Which leaves 15,000, right?
No, the 15 will come out of the Weers Beach account, and the 90 will square everything away on Lakeside Avenue, and they'll all be paid for.
Weers Beach account.
And that's the one where the parking money goes in, the first 25,000, you'll see in your budget book, goes into the general fund, and anything beyond there is used for improvements into the beach or the bathhouse or parking lot and those types of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, motion to be in order to move to transfer $41,880 from account 53-302-001. I'm sorry?
You said 53, it's 56.
The second item, 53. First account number is 56.
I'm sorry, I'll start over. Motion to be in order to transfer $41,880 from account 56-302-001-0001, Main Street Bridge, and $25,000 from account 54. $24,000 from account 53-301-001-0001, LED lighting bond, for a total transfer of $65,880 to account 01-497-500-0060, parking kiosks. Counselor Doyle makes that motion. Counselor Bowden seconds it. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five affirmative votes, that motion carries. That concludes our new business for the night. We have a number of items under unfinished business. Uh, the first four are second readings. And first, we go to Resolution 1717 with regard to establishing a non-capital reserve account for the Laconia School District to be titled, "Laconia School District Education Stabilization Reserve Account." That resolution is printed in its entirety on page 45. And because this is a second reading, we don't need a motion to waive the reading?
Correct.
You do need it.
No, you don't.
Don't?
You aren't correct.
Okay. Okay, a motion being, is there any discussion before we get to this? A motion to be in order to move a second reading of Resolution 2017-17 relative to authorizing the city manager to establish a non-capital reserve account for the Laconia School District to be titled, "Laconia School District Education Stabilization Reserve Account As Presented."
That's your motion.
Who makes that motion? Seconded by Counselor Bowden. Any discussion? All who's in favor of creating that account, please raise a hand. All opposed, please raise a hand. We have four votes yes, one vote no, the motion carries. Okay, we're on to the second item, which is on page 46. This is Resolution 18, which is printed in its entirety on the next page. And this is relative to tax exemptions for the elderly. Any discussion before we get to making that motion? Okay, motion to be in order for, to move a second reading of Resolution 2017-18 relative to tax exemptions for the elderly as presented. Counselor Bullock makes that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Doyle makes, is a second sub-motion. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries. Next up, we have Resolution 19. That's on page, motion's on page 48 of your packet. The resolution is printed in its entirety on page 19. Any discussion of this before we get to motions? Motion to be in order to approve a second reading of Resolution 2017-19 relative to adoption of the All Veterans Property Tax Credit and establishing the amounts for implementation as presented. Counselor Bullock makes that motion. Counselor Baer seconds it. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries. Now we get to the fun part. Budget resolutions. Okay, this is going to be Counselors' routine business with your indulgence of the reading of them. We could waive the reading of them, but I want to read the numbers out loud, and it's going to take just as long to do that, so I'm just going to read the whole resolution. Now, be forewarned, two of the resolutions are going to be, are called, need to have amendments called forward. Okay? So to put this in parliamentary terms, we pass these resolutions on first reading. So the first thing we have to do when we get to them, the two that are affected, which is the Motorcycle Week Resolution and the General Fund Resolution. When we get to those, we'll need a motion to put what we first passed on the table. Once that's on the table, we need to make a motion to amend those numbers to the new numbers. Okay? And you have those new numbers in front of you in your packets there tonight. The other ones, there were no changes to, and so we'll just go through those, uh, as normal. Okay, so we're going to start with Resolution 2017-08. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. Resolve that the following itemized appropriations be made for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and terminating June 30, 2018. For the general fund, a grand total appropriation of $67,75,381, less total revenues of $28,148,341, leaving a balance to be raised by property taxes of $38,927... I'm sorry, $927, $38,927,040. Finally got that out. It was a zero that threw me off there. Okay, can I have that motion, please? Counselor Doyle makes the motion. Counselor Bullock seconds it. All right, that resolution is on the table. Now, do we need to, Madam Kirk, do we need to read the whole thing again, or just substitute the numbers?
No, the motion would be to substitute in the whole, to reflect the new appropriations. It would be to substitute in the whole and state the new appropriated numbers with that motion to substitute.
Okay, so we need to... I'm not sure I got that.
I have it written. So the motion would be to substitute the resolution in the whole to reflect total...
Accept it as a, as a whole with the, with the...
With the new total appropriations of the 67,000.
Okay. So it's a motion to be in order to accept Resolution 08 as... Okay, so it's a motion be in order to accept Resolution zero eight as a whole, except for substituting the following numbers. Grand total appropriation of sixty-seven million five hundred and six thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars, less total revenues of twenty-eight million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, leaving a balance to be raised by property taxes of thirty-eight million nine hundred and nineteen thousand and ninety dollars. All right, would someone make that motion, please? Counselor Bown makes the motion, Counselor Lippman seconds it. Any discussion? Counselor Lipp-
Just note that the amount to be raised by taxes actually went down, even though the appropriation has gone up. Maybe we should just explain that.
That's an adjustment because of the income from the prop-
No, that actually tied into the very first item on the stapled sheet that was on your desk tonight. If you'd like, Mr. Mayor, I can run through that sheet very quickly, so everybody understands what the difference is.
Feel free.
So I would, uh, direct your attention to the revenue side first, which is about two-thirds of the way down the page, the T is cut off, but it says total revenues in bold, so it's down underneath the Departments of Police, Public Works, Welfare, School, is total revenues. You'll see in small print that we're reflecting three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in revenue for the sale of the Lakeport Fire Station, which we now know will be occurring in this fiscal year, and there's the increase in fifty-four thousand dollars in motor vehicle registration. And, um, those two new items of revenue are rolling into the budget, and that adds up to a total of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and that's offset, if you go up to the top of the page, and for the moment, just please skip the war service credits amount of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, but if we start with the capital outlay, as we've discussed, to pay for the increase in the solid waste curbside collection and the recycling contract, we're adjusting roads down by sixty-six thousand dollars to reflect the current appropriation in the budget year we just ended. We're moving revenue from the sale of the Lakeport Fire Station into the next four line items, so forty thousand towards the beach drainage, uh, that Kevin Dunleavy spoke of, twenty thousand to the pedestrian walkway over in Opechii Park, thirty-five thousand to the fencing, again, in Opechii Park, and twenty-five thousand towards the surfacing of the basketball courts in two locations, that was discussed two weeks ago.
Manager?
Yes.
On the road, you're clarifying that it's, we talked about the additional borrowing to increase the investment road, so this is just on the cash amount?
So on the cash amount, last year, we did a million four eighty-four, and we transferred sixteen thousand out of impact fees, which could be a recommendation, again, this year, to give us the buying power of a million five for general street repairs. In addition to that, in the budget before you, we have a two-point-five million dollar bond for general street repairs, and the council also set it up, set up that dedicated fee out of the motor vehicle registration that took effect as of July first, and that five-dollar fee is now going into a designated special account for transportation improvements, which certainly is street repairs, so, and we're going to be receiving that one-time money back from the state that was surplus from the fiscal year they just completed, that we're anticipating getting sometime this summer or fall, so we certainly are adding a whole lot more money to streets, even though in the cash portion, we are level funding it. All right, so, under the administration, we've moved forty thousand dollars into contingency, and that forty thousand dollars, you'll see a couple of lines below, was taken out of the fire department budget, and a couple of overtime line items. The two hundred and sixty-five thousand in contingency, and back up under the administration again, is the difference between the three hundred and eighty-five thousand in revenue that we're going to realize from the sale of the fire station, and those four small projects in the park system that I just mentioned add up to the hundred and twenty thousand, so the difference is the two sixty-five. And we put in parentheses, just as our own internal note, there was discussion about possibly funding a police position later in the year. We have applied for a grant, we'll know on that in a few months, so that discussion can happen, but that two sixty-five is just slated to go in a contingency rate now, as a placeholder until determined. Um, so moving down, the forty thousand I already mentioned out of the fire department, the solid waste, the hundred and twenty thousand to cover the cost of the solid waste and recycling curbside contract in the remote locations, again, is made up of the extra fifty-four thousand in motor vehicle revenue, and the sixty-six thousand reduction in the street budget, so that adds up to the hundred and twenty. All of that nets out against the increased revenue, and really, other than increasing the amount of revenue, we've increased the appropriations to match, and therefore, there's no impact to the amount of money to be raised by taxes, there's no impact to the tax cap calculation. Now, just going back to the very top number, the war service credits, uh, the application for folks to file for that credit, I'm drawing a blank if it's April first or April fifteenth, but it was after the budget was put together, so now we know that that number is seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars less than we budgeted for, so just since we have a current number, we've slotted that in, um, and that's the reduction in the overall appropriation of where that came from, the counsel Lippman alluded to, and again, no impact to the tax rate, you can see all of that calculation down at the bottom, we're still proposing a twenty-eight cent increase on the tax rate, the amount to be raised by taxes hasn't changed, um, everything else. So, the motion that you have before you to substitute in the whole takes all of these items, and would move it into the numbers that the mayor just read in one fell swoop for you.
Okay, we have substitute motion, um, for Resolution zero eight on the table. Any other, just any other comments before we get to a vote on that discussion? All right, so what we're voting on first here is substitute the numbers that I last read for the numbers previously passed on the first reading for Resolution zero eight. All who's in favor of doing that, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. So now, we need to pass the resolution as amended. So we're talking about, again, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. The general fund appropriation of sixty-seven million five hundred and six thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars, less total tax revenues of twenty-eight million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, leaving a balance to be raised by taxes of thirty-eight million nine hundred and nineteen thousand and ninety dollars. And I have, all right, so Counselor Lippman makes that motion, Counselor Bown seconds it?
Yep.
All right, any discussion? Now, we have the, we're voting on the general appropriation as amended. All who's in favor, please raise a hand. We have five votes in affirmative, and Resolution zero eight has been approved. Okay, we're on to Resolution zero nine. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the anticipated grants for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Anticipated grants as a grand total appropriation of one million three hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and one dollars, less total revenues of the same amount, one million three hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and one dollar. Someone please make a motion to approve that resolution. Moved by Counselor Baer, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All who's in favor of adopting Resolution zero nine, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that resolution carries. Next up, we're on to the resolution regarding the water fund. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the water fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Calling for a grand total appropriation of two million eighty-one thousand and sixty-five dollars, less total revenues of two million eighty-one thousand sixty-five dollars, plus capital reserve projects of five hundred and ninety thousand four hundred dollars. Counselor Bolduc makes that motion, Counselor Doyle seconds it. Any discussion? All who's in favor of adopting Resolution ten, please raise a hand. Thank you, we have five votes in affirmative, Resolution ten is adopted. Resolution eleven. Well, resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the tax increment financing district Lakeport for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Calling for a grand total appropriation of four thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars, less revenues of the same amount, four thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. Resolution zero eleven is moved by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Bown, thank you. Any discussion? All who's approving Resolution eleven, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Five votes in affirmative, Resolution eleven carries as presented. We're on to Resolution twelve. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the tax increment financing district downtown for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Calling for a grand total appropriation of one hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars, less total revenues of one hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars. That resolution is moved by Counselor Baer, seconded by Counselor Lippman. Any discussion? All who's in favor of Resolution twelve, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, Resolution twelve is adopted. We're on to Resolution thirteen. Resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the sewer fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Calling for a grand total appropriation of three million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars, less total revenues of the same amount, three million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars, plus a capital outlay of one million three hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars. That resolution is moved by Counselor, um, Counselor Baer? We don't have a Counselor Brown.
Brown-Baer.
Counselor Baer, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All who's in favor of adopting Resolution thirteen, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that resolution is adopted as well. On to Resolution fifteen, or fourteen. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Internal Services Fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Calling for a grand total appropriation of one million one hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, less total revenues of the same amount, one million one hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Counselor Baer moves that resolution, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion of Resolution fourteen? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you, five votes in affirmative, Resolution fourteen is adopted. Okay, now we're on to the Motorcycle Week Resolution. Resolution fifteen is relative to making itemized appropriations for the Special Revenue Fund Motorcycle Week for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. A grand total appropriation of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, less total revenues of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. An amendment would be in order to accept Resolution fifteen in its whole substituting a revenue appropriation-
You have to bring that on the table first.
We gotta put it on the table, we gotta-
The numbers you just read ask for a motion to approve.
So, I move- It's on the table. Oh, didn't we vote? We didn't do it. I didn't call for a motion? I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself here. Counselor Bown makes that motion.
I do.
Counselor Doyle, all right, that is on the table now. So now we need to substitute the new numbers, so a motion to be in order to accept the resolution in whole, except for new numbers, a grand total appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, and total revenues of the same amount, and even one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Somebody make that motion, please. Counselor Baer makes the motion, is there a second? Counselor Doyle seconds that motion. So we're now voting on the amendment to substitute one hundred and fifty thousand for one hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. All who's in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we have an amended motion on the floor, so we're back to dealing with Resolution nineteen, fifteen as amended, which is a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Special Revenue Fund Motorcycle Week for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. A grand total appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, less total revenues of the same amount, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That motion is made by Counselor Baer, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, and Resolution fifteen is adopted. And finally, Resolution sixteen. A resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District Weers for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Calling for a grand total appropriation of fifty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, less total revenues of fifty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Counselor Doyle makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All who's in favor of adopting Resolution sixteen, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, and that resolution is adopted, and thank you.
Thank you, everybody, nice job, nice work all season, and thanks to department heads for all their efforts as well.
Absolutely.
Particularly Donna.
Particularly Donna.
Okay, the last item under cold unfinished business is a request to authorize the city manager to sign documents related to Guilford Recycling Center and Access Road. This was tabled at our last meeting, to refresh everyone's memory, this had to do with the, the now infamous Sand Hill, uh, adjacent to the, or on the border between the Guilford Transfer Station and the, the Laconia Airport property. And what I can report to you tonight, I don't think we're ready to take this off the table, but what I can report to you tonight, okay, what I can report to you tonight is that the Department of Public Works has gone out to the site and evaluated the sand, and my understanding is they have decided that they have no use for it. And so Guilford has been notified that the city of Laconia has no use for the sand pile that's on Laconia property. So that leaves one issue to be resolved yet, and that is how Guilford tends to identify the boundary line once the hill has been removed. And so, uh, Mr. Meyer today sent a memorandum to the town manager and town administrator in Guilford, informing him of that, and asking him to inform us as soon as they make that decision about what their plan is for, for marking that boundary line, and then we'll bring that back to the council for approval. Any questions?
So is the question, how we determine what the boundary is, or just how we mark it?
The marking, how we're delineating?
Well, they, uh, Mr. Dunn has already said they're gonna, they'll survey it.
Right.
Okay.
So whether it's just a pin, or we want something-
What we're waiting for is, are you gonna put a hedge there, or a wall of boulders, or how are you gonna mark that, and whether we decide that that's, accept that as appropriate?
Are they gonna remove that, or are they gonna leave it there?
Remove what?
That pile of sand.
Well, we haven't given them permission to do so yet. All I'm reporting tonight is that, that our own public works department says they have no use for that sand, so the assumption there is that that obstacle has been removed from, in theory, has been removed from Guilford's desire to remove the entire hill, including the part that's on airport property.
So clarification, I don't know if you can answer, manager, whether we need the public works director. So we have no use for the sand, does that mean it has no value as well, or?
The type of sand, it wasn't gonna be suitable fill for either any of our road projects, or fill-in around water and sewer pipes and stuff, it wasn't a suitable material, and it wasn't worth us trying to take and stockpile for some very limited uses.
So it has no value?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else on that? So we'll just leave that on the table for now, waiting word from Guilford.
It was the last meeting, it was tabled to this meeting, so you have to have another motion to table it to the next meeting.
It was specifically tabled to this meeting? Oh goodness.
I just moved the, can we just table it?
All right, so we'll bring it off the table, then we'll just table it in general, not to a specific meeting.
I have another suggestion. Why don't we just, at this point, based on what we have for information, refer it to the city manager to, to deal with at this point, and I think it's at administrative level, don't you agree?
I think there was some concern about how we were gonna delineate the property, so I think Guilford can get back to us in short order, and we could wrap this up in two weeks, so I-
I guess what I'm saying is, do we really need it to come back to the council table to resolve it, just whether you're gonna use boulders, or?
I guess if they're just gonna put a survey pin, are we asking for something visual and of size, so I think that's the guidance that I need.
Yeah, we're not asking for a pin, we're asking for some sort of a demarcation that makes it obvious to everyone where airport property starts.
So I'd rather, kinda get a little sense, I don't think the two weeks, if, if the, if we give them the sense we don't want the sand, and if they wanna start working on the hump, um, I think we can work out the other issue in short order and get it back to you in two weeks.
I'm just trying to dispose of it. If we, the mayor is chairman of the airport authority, and the manager, be comfortable-
Can't the airport decide?
So you want to take it off the table, authorize them to sign the documents?
I just think at this point in time, we might as well wait. I mean, it's just-
So.
I was trying to save two pieces of paper.
I would've agreed with you last time we met, but not tonight.
All right, fair enough.
So we table it to a date uncertain, or we table-
All right, so we need a motion to take item five off the table.
So move.
So, moved.
Moved by Counselor Bounds, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, or raise your hand, I'm sorry. Five votes, the affirmative. Okay, the item five is back on the table again, so now we need to motion to table item five indefinitely. Counselor Doyle makes that motion. Counselor Bounds seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. All right, we have five affirmative votes, and so item five is put on the table indefinitely and will remain on the agenda under unfinished business.
Nothing can be done with that sand. Nobody has any use for it.
Just bring your buckets.
I don't understand why it can't be used for fill somewhere.
I think we can say, Counselor, if you wanna take a pail out there, you're welcome.
Just take your bucket.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that there must be some use for that sand somewhere.
I will, I will leave it to you to have that discussion with, with Mr. Anderson.
Who?
Ms. Anderson.
It's probably not worth it to haul it.
Maybe we'll have a sand pail party or something, or other, when the time comes.
Well, I'm concerned, are they gonna remove it, or are they just gonna put a roll of stones there?
I'm sorry?
Is the town of Guilford gonna remove it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, when we're talking about the boulders or hedge or whatever it is, we're talking about after the hill is gone. We want a demarcation line between where their property starts and stops and ours starts, so that, for two reasons. One, we have a security fence there that's maybe fifty feet away from that, and we don't want anything happening in that border between the property line and the fence line. And the second thing is, we're worried that if it isn't marked properly, that over time, encroachment is bound to happen in terms of use of that property on the part of the transfer station.
I'd say if you leave the hill there, they're not gonna use it, but they just leave it there.
I don't care what Guilford wants to do with it. I, period, so, it's up to them.
Yep.
The reason for not wanting to leave it there is because it's unstable, because if you remove half of it.
Well, they made it unstable.
Okay, I will argue that.
I would love to go into a non-meeting once we adjourn this meeting.
Never did, in a million years, that I dreamed that sand pile was.
He's the new appointed collector.
Causes much discussion.
Looking for Mary.
Okay, we have finished with unfinished business. We have no nominations or elections tonight. Council comments?
Counselor Lippman. Just wanted to recognize again Counselor Bolduc's son, Donald Bolduc, who's retiring as a brigadier general, who's made his father proud, I'm sure, but a whole community in terms of what he's accomplished in his career.
Just passing his pictures around, those are the helicopter that he crashed in.
Remember he, in the piece, they talked, you know, this.
I mean, he's done some great, great things. There's been articles written about him in the New York Times and Union Leader recently, and he's been a leader in many respects, and.
Why it didn't catch on fire is beyond anybody but that's.
Congratulations, Armin.
Thank you.
Good genes.
Another one falling in his footsteps.
Yes, he is. He's almost a general, isn't he? Yeah.
It brings to mind a story to me regarding Mr. Anderson's wife, actually, who's a retired brigadier general as well. And, and when she joined the Rotary Club here in Laconia, the, one of the longtime members stood up and welcoming her, said that he wanted to welcome her to the club and recognize the fact that they had a lot in common, that they had both been in the army, and she had one star and he had one stripe. Any other council comments? Thank you. Okay, before we adjourn the meeting, I'm going to note, for the council's sake and for the public's sake, that immediately after adjourning this meeting tonight, we're going to have a, what is euphemistically referred to as a non-meeting, which means the council has the right to meet behind closed doors for the discussion under New Hampshire law of very specific items, including contract negotiations. And so, we're gonna have a brief meeting on that subject. So, we thank you for attending tonight, and we'll be clearing the room once we adjourn the meeting. So, for lack of objection, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at eight twenty-five, eight thirty-five P.M. Thank you.